...with a few others as well. And we have more extensive sort of results in our appendices of the plan, just giving you the highlights here. We did an extensive inventory analysis, you know, not having a bunch of sidewalks or a lot of GIS data available to us, we wanted to generate that for the town. So we developed a pretty detailed survey, you know, visual survey, so some of it's qualitative, but 33 miles of assessed shoulder conditions, that can be used moving into the future, we give that for our analysis as well. Give you a general sense, you know, about a quarter of the streets that we inventory, we consider walkable. And we sort of visually show that in the plan that we need and, you know, breakdown is, you know, generally mostly walkable to walkable is the majority of what we looked at, but clearly a lot of barriers that we have to address. So that is both the survey results, at least we also asked about intersection as well. Those are the red circles here with a few more that we added from the bike tour. And then the inventory, you see the inventory streets there, the blue is good, is walkable, green being, you know, mostly walkable, and yellow being really the barriers and gaps, or where, you know, we have to be comfortable just sharing the roadway. So I think, you know, the take, this is a really powerful graphic, if we want to go into it, a lot of my presentation after this slide will focus on bikeways. But to note, you know, Atherton Avenue, for example, is mainly blue-green with a few key, you know, exceptions. So as, you know, town staff begin to, you know, address some of these gaps, I mean, this should be quite helpful, and even working with, you know, very particular property owners on trying to minimize these yellow areas. So some good news out of that inventory as well. You know, the issue of ADA access is a complicated one at Atherton. You do have on your CID an ADA plan, so, you know, we didn't have the resources to fully develop those ideas, a lot of the expertise that would go into that. But generally speaking, you know, there's some conflict that you have to work through, particularly on the municipal code level, we'll talk about that a bit more. You do have some really positive elements as well that, you know, I don't want to forget because they're a little bit non-traditional, but obviously a very scenic environment is supportive of pedestrian activity. The restriction on parking is something that actually you're probably well ahead of other communities on. And then just, you know, a commitment to keeping the character actually does support, you know, a less of a focus on vehicular throughput, which does support pedestrian bicycle activity. So some positives as well. We've kind of pushed off, you know, the details of ADA to another day with the notion that you have that already planned in your budget. But a couple notes, you know, I think we'll have to clearly look at some non-traditional approach to accommodation, and we try and give you some direction on that in terms of ways to provide ADA access that aren't a yellow curb ramp and a sidewalk. And that can be further fleshed out, I think, with some more planning and design efforts. We, in the master plan, we just referenced that as being consistent with the plan. And just to give you an example, you know, Los Altos is a town that we're currently working in as well, and has a lot of same characteristics in terms of wanting to minimize suburban elements. You know, here's an example of probably a hybrid approach to a curb ramp, that might be something to consider as you move forward.
On the, yes, I, you know, you can focus a little bit on the not walkable areas.
Yes.
But, you know, in your, I think it's important to point out that on a degree, 90% of the not walkable is either there's a tree there, or there is, or somebody planted on it, and maybe causing somebody to not step on their ID or something like that.
Exactly. And so here, we represent, we take a sort of a plan view that you have in the municipal code and represent it here in a, in sort of a section view. And you can see that in that first three feet off the roadway, you know, there is landscaping a lot. And that's, I think, speaking directly to, I don't know, with my point, you know, in our inventory, we found landscaping to be the number one impediment. And here's a great example, right? So here's your code, the maximum, right? You could do other things, you could provide, a lot of folks do provide gravel as well. But you, here you see the code, and here you see it implemented to a T along Emily, and, you know, not a walkable environment. So it's beautiful, it's, you know, it's a, it's a nice rural environment, but if the goal is to, you know, prioritize walking, you know, the good part is, it's relatively easy to fix this.
So what's happening is, are people, people are walking on that low grass.
Right.
And it's seeded with netting, and they are tripping, and, you know, and it's mushy, and it's right there on the edge. If you continue further to where McBane intersects.
They do introduce the pathway, right?
They, yes, they, and I don't know why they didn't, you know, continue down the bench. Sacred Heart said that they couldn't, because they'd have to take out the taller grasses to make it connect. And I said, okay, why not, you know? And it would go all the way down to their driveway, and then to the open gravel easement, all the way to Valparaiso. And that's what they should be encouraged to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also when it's raining and it's all mushy, and so people walk on the streets, and then you have bicycles and you don't have enough space for the cars, and things like that.
It's very interesting.
Right.
Their response is that the city has made them create this bio-swell for their drainage. My response is if you did just pervious pavement or cavers, it will do the same thing.
So I think you're hitting on some key points, that drainage really is a key piece of how you approach, the need, and that drainage and walkability go hand in hand. Here's another example, this is along Alameda de los Pulgas, and it's Google, and it's a little, little hard to read. But you see the rocks, right? The rocks is the other thing we heard a lot about. And this actually is meeting the city's requirements. If you look at the edge of the roadway, you know, where you have a valley gutter starting, it looks to me that that's six feet off. So if the property owner is to the letter of the municipal code, but wouldn't it be great from a pedestrian standpoint if those rocks were just actually tucked up more closer to the valley gutter? You know, I think, you know, we, as pedestrians, you want some kind of barrier from traffic. You have to match that, you know, be careful not to introduce too many barriers for vehicles along the roadway, but with a valley gutter, we think there's, you know, flexibility, and ideally you just wouldn't have this right in the middle of what could be a quite a walkable environment.
But then there wouldn't be no place for park.
Correct. So in our master, in the master plan that we currently have, we want to give you options, right? Because at the end of the day, you're not going to be having huge capital projects and telling, you know, and coming through, and this is going to be a coordinated effort with property owners, with enforcement. So, you know, a couple of examples here quickly, you have existing conditions up at the top left, easiest thing to do is just make that three feet walkable instead of having it be landscaped, that may, or may not be possible based on the drainage. The other one is, you know, introducing opportunities, putting the barrier, the opportunities to add barriers like rocks or other obstructions, actually closer to the roadway edge, making sure that it's a bit safe, you have some shy distance, that there's some color contrast, you want to introduce some performance measures with those barriers, but now you're, you're placing a greater emphasis on that clear space behind that barrier for pedestrians. And they would appreciate having, you know, whether it's even just a small set of rocks, that's, that's something for them. Moving to more capital intensive options, you know, many communities do sort of a valley gutter with a, with a sneaky sidewalk behind it or a walkway. You know, that can be a monolith concrete, that could be something where you, you have the same valley gutter, and then you backfill it with asphalt, or with a stone dust, or some other, you know, some, some other treatment. But that, you know, that could be the, at least you're getting the dimensions down for a walkable environment. And then lastly, my favorite, trying to introduce a concept of the green gutter, so this is sort of a, I'd say a best practice way of introducing some greenery, helping with drainage, helping with, you know, not providing a typical vertical curb and gutter system. So essentially, it's a gutter system, it does convey water to your inlets, but you would have the opportunity for some infiltration. And, you know, the roadway edge is not a vertical curve, it's flush with the landscaping, and then if you do need any sort of vertical difference to support drainage or flat surface for the walkway, it's kind of hidden behind vegetation. And so here's what that looks like.
So that would be sort of like the Emily Avenue at Sacred Heart if they took out those taller shrubs.
It's almost like if you reversed it, and you, yeah, you sort of.
Right, and then you have that.
You focus the drainage sort of closer to the roadway, you know, it's not going to, this is not, you know, in, there's variations of this, and I'm not a drainage expert, but, you know, you could do it tight and have it be more of a gutter, you know, it's going to, it's, it's a conveyance mechanism, but it's prettier than just concrete. Or in this case, you know, you probably have another foot or two, you're probably getting a lot more infiltration depending on your, on your perpilation rate and soil. And that kind of is your, your swell right there, and the focus is, you know, you're putting the pathway, the walkway, away from, again, you're putting a barrier between the roadway and your walkable surface.
If I could jump in, one of the things we were, you know, we'd ask them to do is give us options so that as we go out to talk to residents, or, you know, we'll bring things back to council, you may want to condition development at a certain level to put in something, we don't want to say you have to do it this way. Give people options, it may be more landscaping, it may be a sinuous path, it may have more trees, but ultimately to achieve a variety of goals.
If you told people they could put rocks up right there at the edge of the road, they'd be delighted.
A lot of it you're going to have to respond to without, you know, there's going to be some trees you're not going to want to touch, and so you have to be responsive to the context.
We have so many different variations and different conditions relative to town. It's not all the same. And is this in town?
No.
I don't see that that would work.
This is an example from Oregon.
Okay. Yeah, no.
Got a lot of rain in Oregon.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And you can see, you know, if folks complain about rural, rural character.
Yeah.
You know, there's.
Right, there's a rural character. Who wants the road there?
She's a wagon driver.
That's a rural character. That's about a street from my house, right?
But there's an opportunity.
Right, so I think some of the keys here are, you know, how much do you want to widen out, maybe at a bike lane, you know, where are you, if you are going to add drainage, you know, infrastructure, being careful to, to plan it out such that, you know, you're looking at the master plan from a pedestrian and a bicycle perspective.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
Okay, so you could go back two slides maybe, to your options. When you're looking at the, the barrier, one on the top right with the rocks and stuff, right off the roadway, if we were to have bicycle connected to that, are you envisioning that being a multi-use path, resident, pedestrian and bicycle, or the bicycle on the rock side of the street?
I think it depends on how wide the, you know, how wide the walkway or pathway is. You know, many communities, I think we've even pointed out that Los Altos Hills, they have their own pathway standard. Does not meet, does not meet Caltrans, you know, standards for a two-way bicycle and pedestrian path, but they allow, you know, bicyclists on there, many times it's for a safe rest-to-school route. So, you know, you're not going to have, your hardcore recreational riders are not going to want to be there, they're going to want to be on the roadway.
With that option, I will say we have that option now, and I can tell you a resident recently just hit one of those rocks on a bike because the road, our streets are narrow enough, and so they got, he got pushed off, hit the rock, and was in traction for months. So it's obviously with, we have some limitations.
You may have to introduce a minimum travel lane requirement in order to have that rock be there, yes. I mean, I think in the end, you know, we don't want to minimize, but there is some concern, you know, with vehicles or cyclists, that's why we think color contrast, a little bit of shy distance, but right now, three feet, it's kind of puts you into the pedestrian zone, and so we think there's a happy medium there. But again, everything we talk about is context sensitive, based on the roadway characteristics. You're indeed right.
Thanks.
So let's move on, so, you know, again, we don't, we don't go into, here's the four blocks that you should build, it's about, you know, enforcing. What we don't show, we talked about a bit in the plan, is, you know, you do have actually good current standards on site distance requirements at the corner, you know, requiring sort of a cutout or a bit more distance from the edge of an intersection. There are a number of violations, we didn't go through and catalog the violations, but I think Sacred Heart's actually one of them, where the fence line goes right up to the edge at St. Park to Park and, and Emily, I want to say. It's kind of a backdoor entrance, but, you know, that'd be a case where there are probably a few key intersections, particularly on safe rest-to-school routes, where you might want to just enforce the current municipal code, at least with respect to those triangles. So let's focus on safety quickly, five years of data observed, it's relatively typical, many more bike collisions. Not too surprising you have a number of, you know, sort of key regional bike commuting routes, and a lot of the walking takes place off of those main corridors, is our assessment. Couple fatalities we recorded during our time here, I know there was a more recent fatality, hit and run on Middlefield, that was not captured in our analysis. And the clusters are, you know, pretty obvious, El Camino, Middlefield, a few on, on Valparaiso. And then as we picked up 2012 data, we did an update to this a few months ago, and Alameda de los Pulgas picked up a few more there towards the county border.
Well, the other thing you didn't show very clearly, and I realize it's most of it's a, an intersection, but it's the Oak Road area. So on Oak Road, if you look at Oak Road including the intersection, there were five. Oak Road is just, you can kind of just show there, but you, you know, you don't have that line, okay? So it's, it's a small line, at least on this, on your chart, figure number two.
What type of Oak Road at Middlefield?
Oak Road at Middlefield, yes.
It's a significant cluster, yeah. I mean, I mean, that, that intersection is one of the higher, is one of the higher priority projects.
The buses can't even get around the corner, so I don't really deserve that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So there's, there's here and then down here.
Yeah, so it's definitely clustered, you know, we didn't have, we didn't have the resources to kind of go through and really go into weeds on each of these crashes and collisions, and look at why. But clearly Middlefield has a couple of hotspots, you know, Fair Oaks is another one, actually. And then you have a couple of clusters, you know, specific clusters along the key corridors on El Camino as well. So.
Fifteen.
That, you know, that plays into the prioritization, and we can get back to that in a bit, but yeah, Oak Road definitely stands out in our analysis. If we don't talk about that, we can, we can emphasize that further in our narrative. So, and I, you know, that, that graphic already has the proposed bikeway network, so the blue for those, you know, the blue lines are, are bike lanes, you know, they can be existing bike lanes, but we're trying to emphasize that, those are where a lot of them don't meet the minimum standards, or even if they do, there are still the priorities for investment and upgrade to more enhanced bike facilities. The new bike facilities that we recommend are really along Selby Lane up to the north edge of town, and then Atherton Avenue, that we, you know, we did hear folks wanting to have better bike facilities. I think thinking of that whole corridor being done as a bike lane should be probably a long-term consideration. There might be things to do in the short term that aren't a bike lane, maybe it's a shared environment, but there's some emphasis on, you know, this is a bicycle route, share the road type signage.
Now, if you put a bicycle lane along the roadway, could you park a bicycle?
Correct, correct. She had taxis coming through here. So in a lot of these purple lines, and again, we actually did a number, we took the corresponding adjacent community plans and updated. So this map is reflecting, you know, the Melon Park downtown specific plan, as well as the North Fair Oaks plan. You know, there's different layers of recommendations, where we try to weed out what we thought was the least likely, and this kind of gives you a good snapshot of not just Atherton, but your neighbors as well. So what I'm just highlighting here, this is a county identified route, so we, we did start with our, the 2011 comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian plan from the county perspective, and Alta did that plan, so it was relatively easy for us to start there. This is a north-south sort of shared bicycle boulevard route, so it's not about bike lanes, it's about sort of low-volume streets. And it really is seen as an alternative to the bike lanes on Middlefield and Alameda, as well as an alternative to El Camino in terms of, you know, those community through trips, commuting trips. Melon Park has a, you know, picks up the recommended facility along, I forget which street, actually, I think.
San Mateo.
San Mateo. And then that goes, goes into.
Stanford.
Stanford. And actually, from my work in Palo Alto, I know that, you know, about 2018, they're expecting to actually punch through, and right now it's a T-intersection, you're going to have to do a little bit of a job, but you'll be punching through that when they update some facilities as part of the medical center expansion. So that would be a very, you know, it already is a great route, it'll be even more direct. Through Atherton, it's, you know, it's a number of twists and turns, and so just providing wayfinding signage is certainly one of the top recommendations to help just, you know, promote that as a through route, make sure folks know.
Why would, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, but crossing Valparaiso at San Mateo, there's no light signal. So you take your life in the hands doing that, and then again, crossing Atherton Avenue.
Yes. So Atherton, we definitely talked about, we actually talked about that at the, not only the bike tour, but also at the most recent SAG meeting. Valparaiso, I know there's been a number, you know, there was more heavy-handed improvements that were proposed, I think there were some trip reduction strategies that Sacred Heart implemented, and they didn't have to do that for their EIR. And then we know that there's an upcoming project, so we, you know, we didn't, kind of wanted to focus off that corridor because we know there's going to be a pretty focused effort coming through. We still did prioritize Emily at Valparaiso for, you know, potential follow-up improvements, you know, just minor improvements even to, again, because this is such an important route.
Yeah, one of the things that, as I was looking over this, and I know we hadn't brought this up before, but, you know, a lot of transportation alternative groups come down Middlefield, they come down Glenwood, get on Laurel, and then they go over across the bridge, there's a second, you know, you know there's the bridge.
Yes, yep.
Willow Road that then feeds directly into Bryant.
Bryant.
There's a Winston Bike Boulevard there, so, you know, you might want to consider something along those lines too, because that one is fairly heavily used for people that are riding bikes from, from North Fair Oaks as well as Redwood City commuting into Palo Alto.
So in that sense, do you, do you see the key facility as being Ensenal? What, where do you see that?
Down Ensenal, they normally come down, a lot, a lot of bike groups come down Glenwood Avenue because it's a straight shot down Valparaiso, or if they're going to go to this bike route, they'll turn off on Laurel because then you go Laurel all the way down to Willow, and you can, and you go.
Right. And we, we heard of that route most in the context of the SAG, coming through the park and coming, having, needing a key to access the gate.
Well, no, see, the, yeah, but that's over.
That's the other way.
Yeah, that's the other way, that's, the park is on the other side.
He's talking Glenwood, Laurel.
He's talking Ensenal down to Willow.
And then you.
Then you see who right now.
Into Palo Alto there.
Yeah, see that purple line, that's, I assume that's Bryant.
Yes, yes.
That's what, that's what you're.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so I mean, I think that, so you're saying the Atherton facility would be some connection off to Laurel from Middlefield.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this is, this is the bike boulevard, this is Bryant.
Yep.
Okay? And so you come right across, and it's even got signs pointing you, as soon as you come across the bridge, it's got signs that point you right onto it.
Right. And we'll be actually working with the city to make upgrades to Bryant over the course of this next year, too.
Yeah, and because they got all the, the stop signs are all on the side, I mean, it's a, it's a great ride, and it gets you right downtown to the university.
Okay. We can definitely take a look at making sure that we're providing that connection from Middlefield, because you're right, there's Ensenal now, but we're not showing any enhancements currently, no. There is, you know, in terms of class three shared facilities, I think the other sort of key one to point out outside of this Beta Ridge corridor, which we'll talk about shortly, is just the Civic Center Fair Oaks Lane area. As you are making upgrades, even before or with upgrades to the Civic Center, you know, Fair Oaks is never going to be bike lanes, but clearly it has a strong connection into the campus, and using, you know, Dinkelspiel to get over to, you know, sort of connecting your two main civic destinations makes a lot of sense. In terms of, you know, the kind of improvements, we sort of already talked about them a bit, the two key elements are shown here, really it's about, you know, just documenting that this is a bike, a bike way, providing wayfinding, particularly for where you have multiple turns. And then, you know, lately, a lot of communities have been really focused on using these sharos, the shared lane marking, you see that striping in the roadway. I imagine that, you know, signs everywhere will not be that well received, this, you know, we can kind of moderate the amount of signage with this, you know, this sort of modest striping. And then you have that those arrows there can actually be shifted to actually give you wayfinding direction right in the roadway. So a pretty slick, very sort of modest investment, but a lot of cyclists appreciate that, you know, particularly on these low-volume streets. You know, green infrastructure, planting trees, traffic circles, speed tables, any other sort of, you know, traditional traffic calming element to keep speeds down, to limit, you know, through traffic, those are also encouraged, but you have a lot of those features already. But certainly, they could be prioritized on these, on these corridors. So here's the bike lanes that we talked about, you know, the three major ones, you know, we also have the potential for bike lanes on Selby and El Camino. I'm leaving Avenue off again for the reasons I mentioned, but that would be the other logical corridor, but starting with the ones you already have and making sure they meet standards, that's clearly the goal and the sheet here with the plan. And we point to the National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACCO, Urban Bike Way Guides, is something that my firm actually helps push and generate, and it's a great resource, a lot of communities are picking it up, and so rather than sort of detail out the plan, referencing this document as being a potential alternative or supplementary design guidance in addition to the Caltrans design standards, there's a whole movement trying to mesh the two together now, and I think over the course of the next year or two, you will see a lot more consistency between what's in the highway design manual and options that are shown here. And I'll give you just a few key ones, so that some of the main elements are just adding green thermoplastic or paint to help increase the visibility at conflict zones with some very particular signage, as, this is sort of trying to get at the right turn in the through bike lane, trying to manage where, as a vehicle, you would merge over and take your right-hand turn. At intersections, you can, you can extend a bike lane through the intersection with an array of treatments, this is showing dash lines and green. And then this is a bike box, so where you have the right conditions, trying to have cyclists get ahead of stop traffic, you know, particularly with youth cyclists, you don't want to be inhaling exhaust, you know, nobody wants to be doing that. This may also help if you have tight turns coming from the top of the image, trying to make a southbound left turn, you know, having the vehicle stop further back from the crosswalk is helpful, and it gives a chance for cyclists to queue up in front. And think about Middlefield and Marsh at this intersection, if you don't have room to actually continue the bike lane, a lot of communities are actually using a combined right turn lane and bike lane, it's the same width or maybe a bit wider, say 12 or 13 feet, but within that travel lane, you're trying to at least channelize cyclists to stay on the inside so that most vehicles could actually get around and make a right-hand turn. You're not, you're allowing some efficiency for vehicles while still providing some visual cues that cyclists are, should be expected.
So for that slide, you are anticipating that the cyclists are going to continue through the intersection going north on Middlefield.
Correct.
And not making the right, uh, Marsh.
They could, and if you have a heavy turn volume, you could put a shero in that lane, or you might just keep it a shero, or you might not stretch the bike lane, but this is particularly where you have a lot of through movement for cyclists, so Middlefield, and then a lot of folks are making right turns, say, onto Marsh, you know, but you don't have the space to actually do a separate bike lane.
And so right now, bicycles are channeled up into, up, is it?
You're correct, and that's something we want to fix, because it's not, it's not a, not good practice. You know, generally, bicycles are vehicles and they're allowed in the roadway, so I would imagine there's a ton of folks who don't do that, so, you know, it's just no, you know, it's not serving the intended purpose. And I think there's just, then you're, you know, you're sending those folks to the intersection where they will still have a conflict with turning vehicles potentially. You know, ideally, you want to give options to folks, but, you know, the in-road option is typically preferred as a starting point, so.
That was a area.
Well, and we'll come back to, we'll come back to that in just a second. So that Middlefield-Marsh intersection is, plays an important role in sort of our other major, one of our major concepts called the Beta Ridge Greenway. Beta Ridge is something we did, worked well in Palo Alto on their plan, you know, the concept of just linking your sort of key recreational destinations through town, the idea here is that you're trying to link it with your key destinations, namely the park, but also this, you know, this kind of the campus area, and then, you know, trying to get, trying to utilize this sort of access as a way to generate support for, you know, minor programmatic improvements as well as. generate support for, you know, minor programmatic improvements as well as big, big picture stuff like a new overpass at Marsh Road or some very significant improvements to Marsh Road that, you know, take you out to, to the park in the Bay Trail. So, you know, it's kind of the organizing principle and you can string all kinds of different, you know, mini-concepts on it. And that's what we try and do. So the, the facility is not just, it's not a trail the whole entire way. The concept is make it accommodating to both pedestrians and cyclists. So we detail out some, you know, some ideas for the Marsh and Middlefield intersection as being sort of a key fulcrum.
I have a question.
Yes.
So can you go back two slides to the map? One more.
A little bit of lag time here.
So where does, where does the bay to ridge trail go once it hits Alameda?
Um, you know, to go up any further into the hills, you know, there's the reservoir, but you can't really get there.
No, you can't.
Destination.
Just like to get into the ridge.
You, if I take Alpine.
You take Alpine.
Yeah, you take Alameda down and link up to cross two eighty at Alpine.
Yeah.
Or you go north.
Or you go Woodside Road and.
Or you go Woodside, yeah.
And La Honda.
Yeah, you could do that as well.
So, so if you're doing that, this is the question is, I'm not sure why you're choosing the corridor that's going on these smaller roads through the residential area rather than come up to Fair Oaks and go straight up Fair Oaks and Atherton Avenue.
Have you ever tried to bicycle in Fair Oaks?
I, I'm not sure. Again, it's, it's a concept and I, and, you know, I think we, we have, other folks have had really good points. Why can't it be over here? Melon Park has some good routes, Ringwood.